Township of Howell zoning board of adjustment, Monday, November 28th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township zoning board to be open. Adequate notice have been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Powell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and its form appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. All right, it looks like Billy is tied up with Family Matters.
Yeah.
Okay.
I saw that.
All right, roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti is excused. Mr. Roscoe is absent. Mr. Stanton is excused. Mr. Rubau is absent. Mr. Parisi.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, everyone, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, our own and to the republic. One nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Bear, can you please sign in the professionals?
Yes, with the professionals, please raise your right hand. Do you swear that, well, Mr. Rizzo, you could hold, oh, no, you're right, you're one of, yeah, you could raise your right hand, sorry, Mr. Rizzo. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. T.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Mr. Rizzo, who are we representing? Yourself or the township or?
Hi, Jordan Rizzo with CME. There was a conflict with this first application, so we reviewed this application.
Got it.
Yeah, Mr. Sayah, I have a conflict with this one, so Andy, I don't know if you want me to have Eileen put me in the audience?
Yeah, you should probably.
When the time comes.
Yeah, when you get to the application.
Okay.
All right, Eileen, any minutes to be approved?
There are new minutes to approve tonight.
Are there any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Eileen, any correspondence?
I have two things. So I have a letter from Mr. Melinak, attorney for New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC, case number BA 2117, asking that his application, which is on tonight's agenda, be adjourned to the January 9th, 2023 meeting with notice. The board has been granted an extension for the application until April 30th, 2023.
Okay, so for anyone out there that is interested in case number BA 20-117, New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC, this will be carried to January 9th, 2023. And the board extension, Eileen, again, is to?
April 30th, 2023.
30, 2023, got it. And, you know, that also, also that January 9th, that's the reorganization meeting.
Yes.
So we'll be taking care of business as well. All right, so as long as the applicant is aware of that, thank you. All right, what else do you have, Eileen?
Uh, we, can we make a motion and vote on the dates for the, so I can notice for the dates for 2023?
Eileen, did we, you know, did you get the comments? Is, did you finalize the dates?
Yeah, we had an issue with September 25th. Um, but if it's after sundown, I'm not sure if that's an issue for anybody. And then you have to, instead of December 25th, you have to vote for December 4th or the 18th, and just let me know.
Okay, so if we're going, you said September 25th, and the option for September 25th is to move it to the left one week, is that correct?
Yeah, it's Yom Kippur, but if the meeting starts at 7:00 PM.
I'm checking my calendar.
I would, Eileen, I would still suggest, since the holiday ends at sundown that evening, it's still, there's still family things going on.
Well, technically, it's September, and sundown is after the start of our meeting day.
I wouldn't come, I'll be celebrating and wouldn't come to that. And if they didn't eat all day, when the sun goes down, there's other things to do, like, I would strongly suggest that we carry this to the next meeting. Everyone, take a look at their calendars and see if these substitutions are amenable to their, you know, their personal calendars, and we can deal with this at the next meeting. We don't have to deal with this today. It has to be dealt with before the end of the year.
Eileen, you're good?
Yeah, that's fine.
I know that for everyone's edification that I didn't think it was wise to go ahead and carry back to back with December, so December 18th, I think it worked, is what I'm saying, rather than going December 4th and having the late October one, you following?
Yeah. I agree with you on that.
Yeah, it's so far out, it's even hard to really, you know. But yeah, I agree with that.
For the proper spacing, I thought the 18th would be good.
Yeah.
Then, in September, if I recall, I thought we would move that back a week if it, and if that cleared the conflict, then we would be good. So everyone, take a look at it, and we'll, we'll vote on it next meeting.
Are there any holidays on September 18th?
No, it ends. It ends on that Sunday, so we're good.
That's good by me, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any, any resolutions for tonight?
No resolutions for tonight.
Okay, then what we have is applications before the board. And first up, of course, is case number BA 20-117, New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC. Mr. Bear, I think we've talked, we've discussed this, we're carrying it. Mr. Rizzo, he's representing the applicant?
Mr. Rizzo is your engineer for the first application that we're going to hear on the end, on the agenda tonight.
Charlie. On the Zarelli application.
Right, Charlie has a conflict. CME is filling in for Charlie on that application, so he's your professional for the first application.
All right, so case number BA 20-117, New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC, that's already being carried, then the next up on the agenda is case number BA 08-24A, slash Rod Zarelli, use variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Mr. Stanton, welcome.
I think Mr. Roscoe is on his way in, too.
Sorry, I apologize. I was visiting my dad in rehab. He just got out of the hospital. I was a little bit delayed. I'm on my cell phone, so I apologize.
You're good, don't worry, sir, thank you. Okay, so the description of this application is application of Rod Zarelli as applicant and owner seeking the use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval on premises known as Block 49, Lot 11, 255, Squonkum Road to modify the existing warehouse building, including the addition of four new overhead doors to provide a total of seven. The two smaller existing buildings, 851 square feet and 2,377 square feet in size, are proposed to be removed, and a new fenced outdoor storage area is proposed. The existing residential is proposed to remain. Driveway access to the site is also proposed to remain the same. The existing chain link fence along the property frontage is to be proposed to be relocated closer to the street, and the existing site ID sign is proposed to be relocated further back from the street. No other changes are proposed with this application. Exploration date, January 21st, 2023. Mr. Bear?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the board is jurisdiction and the application may proceed.
Thank you. Did we bring in the, is Mr. Alfieri the applicant's representative?
Yes, Mr. Alfieri is in the meeting.
Yeah, same.
Let's get him sworn in, and, not him, but his professionals.
He's on mute. Hey, Sal, you're on mute?
Sal, you're talking. Okay.
Okay, they just let me in, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi Alfieri, Jacob's on behalf of the applicant. We have three witnesses to present this evening, Mr. Zarelli, the applicant, Ryan McDermott, our engineer, and then either Justin Osceolo or Christine Cuffone, our planner. We're going to be starting, Andy, you want to swear all in or one at a time as we go?
We usually do it all at once now, if that's okay.
So we're gonna have to let, Mr. Zarelli is with me. Eileen, we have to let in Ryan McDermott, Christine Cuffone, and/or Justin Osceolo.
Okay.
Mr. Alfieri, are they under any different names? I don't see anybody else other than Mr. Osceolo.
Let's see.
McDermott is in there. Ryan McDermott, can you say that, Sal?
Yes, Ryan's the engineer.
He's in there.
Yes, and may perhaps Justin will be on instead of Christine.
For now, Sal.
Okay, for now, okay.
Now, why don't we do this? Why don't, why?
Sorry.
I said, let's just do it witness by witness.
Okay.
McDermott's gotta unmute and turn on his video. So we got Osceolo, McDermott, and Mr. Alfieri, you have?
Mr. Zarelli's with me, yes. The screen will face him when he speaks.
Okay, so I guess, all right, so Mr. Osceolo McDermott and Zarelli, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Mr. Osceolo, please state your full name and spell your last.
Justin Osceolo, A U C I E L L O, licensed professional planner.
Uh, Mr. McDermott, can you do the same?
Ryan McDermott, M C D E R M O T T, licensed professional engineer.
And Mr. Zarelli?
Uh, Rod Zarelli, Z A R E L L I, I'm the owner.
Okay. Thank, thank you. We're gonna start with Mr. Zarelli. Mr. Zarelli, can, first of all, how long have you owned this property?
Approximately 15 years.
And in 2009, you were this property, and you, as the applicant, were the subject of a prior application for this property, is that correct?
Yes.
And that approval granted you the right to use the property, number one, for an existing single-family home, and that home is still there, correct? Two, your construction office out of the property, the construction business, I should say, and then for outdoor storage, have you been using the property as such since the date of that approval?
Yes.
And have you complied with the conditions of that approval?
Yes.
Now, as it relates to the storage, the approval indicated that you were gonna store recreation vehicle boats and other similar type of equipment and/or vehicles outside, and is that's how you're using the property?
Yes.
You also do not winterize any boats on the property, is that correct?
No, I don't.
And there is no retail sales of any, of any kind on site?
No.
And those were all conditions of the prior approval?
Yes.
And if, assuming the board were to grant this approval, you would agree that those conditions can carry over to this approval?
Yes.
At, let's go point by point. As it relates to the existing single-family home, who is the, you have a residential tenant that lives there, is that correct? And that, and that residential tenant gets access to the house from the, is it the northern driveway or the southern?
Northern.
And that's the only person that uses that northern driveway, is that correct?
Yes.
Then in terms of the, there are two other buildings that are reflected on the plans that were submitted that are smaller in nature. You've agreed if this were approved to remove, to raise and remove those two buildings, is that correct?
Yes.
You're proposing to renovate the existing larger building?
Yes.
What, what is the purpose of the renovation, and what, what exactly are you doing with the renovation?
Uh, the back half, it's, it's pretty much for my, mostly for my shop, my repair shop in the back for my trucks and my equipment.
And you're proposing to, the, the front of the building is 16 feet high?
Yeah, the middle section is 16 feet high.
And the back, where you're looking to renovate, is going, is how high right now?
12, 12 feet high.
So you're, as part of this approval, you're seeking approval to reconstruct that rear portion so that it is also 16 feet high?
Yes.
And you're gonna be adding bays to the back, is that correct?
Yes.
What, why do you need the additional bays?
Uh, just to access that back building, it's, it's, the only door to that back building is on the west side of it, and with the wetlands and the ditch there, the drainage ditch, I can barely get a truck in there.
Now.
Sal, before we go further, you need four additional bays to access that back piece?
Uh, well, three across the front, and I'm gonna keep the one in the back anyway.
So three?
Three.
Free to access the back, or you want three because it's better for your operations?
Oh, three, it's better for my operations.
All right, so let's just, I mean, I don't have any problem with that one way or the other, but like, if it's talking about access, then we're talking about one, not four or three.
Correct. Yeah, and the access was really because that side of the building, but you're right, three, three are what he needs for his business.
Sal?
Yes.
One second. Mr. Rizzo, can you put the overhead on this?
Like an exhibit?
Yep.
If not, maybe Ryan can?
Yeah, I have a couple I'd like to introduce, but for now, let me share just what was submitted to keep things simple. Should be popping up at any moment now.
Yeah, it's there. So, Mr. Chair, the building that we were talking about is that long, narrow building in the center of the plan that Ryan is highlighting. And the footprint is not changing, just that, that little portion at the back is where he's gonna increase the height, and they had those three bays. Just so you have some context. And Ryan, while we're pointing, I mentioned the two structures that would be removed, can you just point those out so that everyone sees?
Sure, and I'm flipping back now to the demolition plan, just so everyone's aware, this is the full civil set that was submitted, this is sheet three of the site plan drawings. This is the demolition plan wherein those two buildings are hatched out here to be demolished.
And then, where's the house? Right there, okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Zarelli, let's talk about your business now. What type of business is it?
It's construction business, but I mostly do dumpsters and portable toilets.
And you have an office on site?
Yes.
What is the, what are the office hours?
Uh, nine to eight to five.
And how many days a week?
Six.
What's that, Monday through Saturday?
Yes.
And then how many employees are associated with your business, and of those employees, how many are located on site?
I have seven employees. Two are on site.
And the two, one would be clerical?
Yes.
And the other is what does?
Just help, help around the yard.
Okay, now in terms of the storage business, which you also, which was the subject of the 2009 approval, you have an area on the site that's fenced in for the storage?
Yes.
And what exactly is stored, and then what hours of operation does that take place?
That's, uh, there's real no, to meet in the office, it's anytime during eight to five, Monday through Saturday. If somebody calls me, I'll meet them on a Sunday, but any of the tenants have access to the property whenever they want it.
All right, and then in terms of activity, how frequently do tenants come and remove one of the vehicles or items that are stored?
Ninety percent of them, once a month if that, if that, a couple of them are in and out every couple of days.
Now.
Where is the storage?
Ryan, can you highlight that?
Can we zoom in on this exhibit? It's like, super tiny. It's really hard to see what we're dealing with.
I, I would like, I think it'd be a lot easier if I could introduce a new exhibit. Uh, forgive me if that's too early, but I'd like to show this aerial exhibit, which might portray this conversation a bit better.
Okay, so.
Is this Mark, Sal, or we're marking?
No, this is, no, we, we left off at A13, so this would be A14, if Ryan can identify it.
Okay.
I'm looking at something very similar to it, honestly.
Yeah, we had an aerial as part of.
That's it. That's what I'm looking at, okay.
Ryan, you wanna use that?
Sure.
Okay, so this, this was part of the submission pack.
Can you go full screen?
It is full screen.
It is full screen at my end.
Okay, got it.
And Andy, this was already submitted, so we don't have to work this separately.
Okay.
So Ryan, would you point out, because we don't have a pointer here, where the storage activity takes place?
The, the prior storage areas were approved up in this portion here and down in this area.
And the only reason that I bring it up, Sal, is because I know this was evaluated in 2009, but here in 2022, there's been more recent litigation that the township has been involved in, and we don't allow any outdoor storage in the front yard. And while I get that it was approved prior, it was approved as part of the prior application, and this is a change to that. So, you know, we do not allow outdoor storage in the front yard as a rule. So that's gonna be something you guys are gonna have to figure out as you move forward.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll deal with it when it comes up, as part of the planning. Now, the other question, Mr. Zarelli, in terms of operations, is that there are no tractor-trailer deliveries of any kind to the property, is that correct?
No.
And we indicated earlier that the southern entrance is the one that's used for all the business activity.
Yes.
There are, there, there's no real area yet that's highlighted for refuse, but you're, you're going to put a permanent, you have a spot there now, but you're, you're willing to put a permanent location for refuse with an enclosure? If this were to be approved?
Yes.
Masonry, right?
Masonry is fine, and Ryan will show the proposed location when he testifies. Now, with regard to the larger building that we were talking about, where you wanted to add the bays for your use, you do have other users and/or tenants that are in the building, and you want to continue to have the right to, to have multiple users.
Yes.
Those users are, what we talked about is flex space, but they're really not flex, not a broad definition of flex space, but a contractor-type business, local, small businesses that are contractors.
Yes, they're not in there now, I'd like to have.
But you have one in the other building.
I do. I do have one in the building I wanna tear down.
Right, and that, that building, that tenant would move into the bigger building?
Yes.
And you have a CO for that existing tenant, and what business are they in?
Certified environmental, they do oil tank and removal and radon.
But the, the site, they don't use the site for any environmental activities, is that correct?
No, they just to keep their equipment there.
And an office?
And an office, okay.
What, do you do anything on this site that would require boats?
He, yeah.
I store boats.
Separate from your operations?
Excuse me?
Is that separate from the operation inside your building?
Yes.
So that's a separate use on the property?
Yes, outdoor storage is a separate use on the property.
Well, typically, outdoor storage is accessory to what's happening in the building, so this is separate and distinct?
Yes, the 2009 approval granted approval for him to run the, his business out of the building, to have the single-family home as a rental, and to have a separate storage facility business for the boats and those type of my items. So, yeah, there were three separate uses that were approved. So, and, and Mr. Zarelli, what you're seeking tonight is, is you're, you're really not expanding the, your business and/or the building, except to add those bays and raise the height, you're not increasing the footprint in any way, is that correct?
Footprint staying the same, I just wanna increase the height.
And in terms of, so the real expansion of the intensity would be the larger area for the storage business component, is that correct?
Yes.
Otherwise, there's no expansion of any, any clearing or buildings or anything?
No.
And you're gonna remove the two buildings that we discussed?
Yes.
In fact, I believe you may have removed one already.
I removed the smaller one.
Okay, then in terms of reports and/or questions, I know there was a reference in one of the reports as to whether you would put a vinyl fence up instead of a chain link fence, and you would agree to do that?
Yes.
If this were approved. And then the fire official, if you, if this were approved and you put up that new fence, you're going to have a gate so that the self-storage would have access through the gate where they would have a key punch of some point to get in. The fire official asked if you would provide a Knox box, and you've agreed that you would do that as well?
Yes.
And then in terms of landscaping, with, again, whatever, and Ryan will get into it in more detail, but whatever the conditions of approval, again, if granted, we would provide whatever landscape support professionals require.
Yes.
I believe that's all the operational testimony.
Mr. Alfieri?
Yes.
So, removed one building, another building you wanna remove, are there utilities to these buildings? Are they capping them? What, what, what do we have going on?
Rod, you done?
Yeah, the, the one building, I, I had all the electric, I had the electric disconnected, I had all the services disconnected. I pulled permits for the small building to be removed, that's gone. When I, if I get approvals for this, then I will tear down the other buildings, and, yeah, I'll have the utilities removed. I'd have to get that before I get the building permit to demo it anyway.
Okay, before we move on to the next, Mr. Alfieri, I would like to ask if any of my fellow board members have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask if, if somebody could just point out the different buildings, specifically the two that are gonna be removed?
Yeah, Ryan, would you do that again? Why, Ryan, if you don't mind, why don't we just have Ryan walk you through the site so you could see every piece of activity that occurs? Go ahead, Ryan.
If, 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 okay, I don't mind doing that whatsoever. This is the existing two-story residential dwelling, which will remain. Here's the smaller of the two buildings to be removed, and then this is the larger of the two buildings to be removed. This fourth building is the warehouse building that we're speaking of, and this is where the applicant proposes a few new overhead loading doors.
Gotcha.
These two buildings here, under my cursor, are the buildings which will be removed as part These two buildings here, under my cursor, are the buildings which will be removed as part of this application.
And where do the boats get stored?
Uh, you, you could see, there's a few, the north end of the building.
Yeah, by the.
Oh, okay, I see the boats now, okay. Thank you.
That's all you got, Mr. Cantor? Okay, anybody else?
I'm good, Matt.
Go ahead, Matt.
Go ahead.
I know, actually, I was good. I, I'm good, I think that was Mark.
Okay, Mark, go ahead, sir.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm looking at the prior resolution from two thousand nine. Can you just point out on the map that we're looking at right now? Uh, where area A is versus area B?
I believe area A was down in this corner. Rod, correct me if I'm wrong.
A little, that, the last, uh, camera pointing there, nobody could see me, just move your cursor to the left, that last, uh, that's, that's an old office trailer, that's gone. Area A was to the left of that.
Okay, over here.
That's all, that's all area A.
Okay. And area B, Rod?
Where's area B?
Uh, just from that to the right. Now, all that where you're now is area B.
Got you. So this is area A right here, which is now grass, and you kind of see it was, it was, you know, a wooded line kind of delineates that, I suppose, and then the area B immediately adjacent to that.
I see two driveways. Which driveway do you anticipate that most of the vehicular traffic is going to be coming into the site?
This sou- southern driveway down here.
Okay. And then the, the, it looks like there's trailers that are lined up behind the larger building that's to be removed. Where are those, uh, you know, trailers and what, anything else that's there? Where are they going to be relocated on the site?
Uh, Ryan, you want to go over with the new plan we're going to have, if you have it on the sheet? Uh, if, if, Ryan, you could kind of explain, if you just go from left to right, right about, yeah, there you go. No, not that one. You have, that's that one.
There's this fenced in portion here, which is the new outdoor storage area.
So any larger vehicles, can they access those two proposed gates? On the, you know, from left to right on this plan view?
Correct, that's the intent, correct.
Mark, you good?
Yeah, for now, I appreciate that.
It looks like they're going to set up a motor equipment pool and fence it in. Yeah, Paul, I just had a question. I don't know if this would be more for the engineer. What type of surface do they have in the back? Because I believe they have asphalt in the front in the driveways going in, but where, is that for the whole property, or do you have milling type surface?
Yes, so it's a, it's a good question. Most of the property under existing conditions is gravel. A portion of the northerly driveway is paved, and I believe at one point the southerly driveway before Rod's ownership of the site may have been paved as well, but under existing conditions, this is primarily consisting of gravel.
Ryan, the, uh, the southern, the southern driveway you're coming in, that is all asphalt. It's, it's, it's a mess right now. But then if you make a right and head up towards, head north, that, that's all asphalt. That's exist, that was asphalt. It's, it's a mess. It's a lot of potholes and then stuff that I keep filling, but it's, uh, there is asphalt on the south driveway.
Okay, and then the engineer will also discuss all the drainage. I'm just, I'm just wondering where the water's going, just by looking at it from, uh, Google right now. Jordan, you got the Google elevation? I mean, we can wait till the engineer wants to testify on that, that might be.
Yeah, Ryan will, Ryan McDermott will cover all of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Rizzo, you be prepared, okay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Turbot, would you like me to have?
Well, when we get there, we'd like to see the Google version of the overhead, the current version, to see the asphalt and so forth.
The board likes to see the aerial photo, the aerial photography.
Sure, I have, I have Google Earth pulled up on my other screen, and it looks like it's the exact same image that you're looking at right here.
Okay.
It's from June twenty twenty-one.
Right, and, and that, this, Mr. Zarelli, this view that the board sees presently is actually how the property looks today?
No, a few of the things are gone. It's pretty much about, about the same, but a few of the things, a couple of the office trailers were mine. I, I have gotten rid of them and stuff like that. There's less there now.
Okay.
It's a little different now.
Jordan, I think what might help is if you showed the street view of the southern driveway, so they could see the actual material that shows on the area when we get to that point.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Zarelli, if, if the northern driveway is going to be restricted to the residential dwelling, is there parking associated with that at the house, or what differentiates the, the residential use from the, the rear commercial building?
They, they go in either way. Um, I know the wife parks out front and the husband parks inside.
Parks out front, like where on here would they park?
In, in the driveway, the north driveway, the wife usually parks there, and the husband drives inside and parks inside.
Inside by that?
By the house, yes, in the back of the house. You can probably see a couple of cars parked around the house, yeah, right there.
Okay, so there's probably one car that's going to be on the, I'll call it the, uh, east side of the fence, so it's in front of the house?
Yes.
And they essentially will pull in forward and then back out, like reverse into the road?
Yes.
And as far as all of the proposed vehicles, boats to be stored on site, that's all consistent with the previous resolution. There's nothing else new from that resolution that would be proposed, um, as storage here.
Uh, well, yeah, we were, we were trying to expand the storage area a little bit.
Right, that, that, Ryan will get into that in more detail, but yes, that's the only expansion, if you will, is other than the height and those bays on the build, the existing building is the, well, enlarging the area of the storage.
Okay, that's the area though, but what about what's actually stored? Is it all consistent with the previous approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I ask another question, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Precy.
Well, I'm looking at, uh, the, the resolution again, and it talks about how uh, there was some violations that had been abated, disturbed areas have been restored. Uh, can, since I, I don't believe any of us were here on the zoning board back in two thousand nine, uh, could you talk about, Mr. Zarelli, uh, what violations were abated uh, in disturbed areas were restored? So we just have an idea as to, you know, what type of improvements you've made regarding that?
Sure, uh, area A was, uh, when I bought the property, there was somebody came in to buy it prior to I did, and he went in the back and tore down a bunch of trees and brought in millings and, and con- broken concrete and filled in area A. Uh, DEP showed up, gave the prior owner uh, violation for it, because the guy that was buying it didn't even own it. Uh, and then, so he just walked away. There was a big huge auction there for the guy he wanted, he went bankrupt, and that's how I ended up finding the property. I went to the auction. And I bought it with, and part of the deal was I had to do the restoration. So I did, I did the, the wetlands restoration.
Okay, and I see in the resolution that it does say that, um, there was a letter of compliance from the New Jersey DEP indicating wetland restoration work has been completed to the department's satisfaction, so I do see that.
That's correct, yes.
Can I ask one other question? I'm looking at that aerial view, and I see some boats appear to be winterized, and some boats appeared to not be winterized. In the resolution, it talks about how, uh, there will be no winterization of boats to take place on site. Can you talk about the storage of the boats? How long are the boats there? I'm assuming that they're there during the months that they're not in the water. That's the purpose of the storage. So if you have a boat that's, that's on your property for storage and it's not being winterized, is it just exposed to the elements through the winter, or are you winterizing the boat on site, which it says that, that in the resolution, that's not going to happen?
No, the boats, the boats come in. I have, uh, some of the boats are, are very expensive, nice boats, uh, and they come in shrink wrapped, winterized, ready to go. I have some boats that haven't left that yard in seven, eight years. Uh, they, I don't think they came in winterized. I don't think they've ever been winterized. They've just been there on a trailer for years. They, they don't leave in the summer. It's just somebody's project that you just can't, it's like the Storage Wars. Uh, they just don't want to get rid of their boat. They've never, they don't winterize them there. They just leave them uncovered and, and they just sit there.
So they just fall into disrepair?
Uh, they don't, they're all fiberglass. They, they, they don't look the greatest, but they, uh, they're not old wooden boat would fall into disrepair, but a fiberglass boat just gets dirty.
Good question, Mr. Precy. So at what point do we consider it abandoned and, you know, the boats need to be removed?
Well, I have gotten very good at uh, taking things back to abandoned property. So if somebody goes, doesn't pay me the rent, within a month, I start the process. It takes about three or four months and I get rid of it. If they continue to pay me, I, I just let them keep it there.
Very good, sir, thank you.
Right, but isn't, like, the storage of, of oversized vehicles is not intended to be kind of like a never-ending like boat graveyard. It, it was intended for like short-term storage where boats would come in for several months and then move out. It was never intended for them to be there for eight, ten years plus, where they're kind of like not, it's, it's becoming a junkyard, which is a hundred percent not what was approved. So I would recommend to the board that should you choose to act favorably on this application, that that outdoor storage conditions be tightened up to where they can stay there for twelve months. After twelve months, they have to go. You know, and if it's in for six, out for a couple back, that's fine, but the intention of having that was never to allow for these things to sit there for five, six, eight years. That's not the intention. That's a junkyard. That's not what this was intended for. And I actually was there in two thousand nine.
Well, Ms. Beam, to, to your point, you know, I'm looking at the resolution, it says all vehicles, boats, et cetera, must be properly licensed and registered. I've never owned a boat. I don't know the process of licensing and registering a boat, but if Mr. Zarelli is saying that the boat's been there for seven years and is not winterized, what criteria needs to be met for that boat to be properly licensed and registered?
Like, that's, I don't know. I don't know the parameters of it, a vehicle, I, yes, I do know, but that's why I'm saying that should you, at the end of all of this, choose to act favorably on this application, then I think that more stringent requirements on that outdoor storage need to be put in place as a condition associated with this application, saying things can stay on that site for X amount of months, and then they have to go. And then, yes, it does become a code enforcement issue, however, it gives the town the enforcement arm they need should there become a problem in the future. Because I, like you said, I don't know a hundred percent how that works, but I can a hundred percent assure you that the intention of this outdoor storage for these oversized vehicles was not for boats to be left there for seven years, for sure.
Mr. Chair, this may be premature, but, uh, um, Ms. Beam talked about that front yard. I mean, Jen, can you give us a little clarity on that, so we, while we're making this decision, we can factor that in too?
So, there was a litigation in the past couple of years, um, on another matter before the planning board that went to court regarding outdoor storage in the front yard. The board denied the application for the outdoor storage in the front yard. It went to court and the court upheld that. So therefore, we do not allow outdoor storage in the front yard. And just so that you know, and Sal, just so that you're aware, the front yard is measured from the buffer. It's not measured from the property line. So you need a fifty-foot perimeter buffer, which it looks like you have there, but then the setback is measured from that buffer line. So all those vehicles that I'm looking at right now would be considered outdoor storage in the front yard, which we do not permit.
Right, but I, I, and this is, I guess, and the debate will have at some point during the course of this application, but my understanding is that the outdoor storage that you're speaking of is storage ancillary to a principal use, which is the trucking business or warehouse business, whereas this is the principal use, the storage business.
They didn't differentiate in the, in the decision, Sal. It was no outdoor storage is permitted in the front yard, period.
I understand.
So we can debate that later, and I'm sure Andy will opine on that at some point. However, you know, I get that this was approved in two thousand nine, but here we are, all these years later, you're changing the parameters of the site, you're asking for things to be changed and additional variance relief. So therefore, in my opinion, the, the, this decision that came back in the past year or so applies to the site and would impact your location of your outdoor store. That's my opinion on the application. Uh, you know, but that's just me. That's not the board. The board can decide to do whatever they want to do. But at the end of the day, we don't allow outdoor storage, and there's no distinction between accessory or second principal structure in the determination.
Thanks for the clarity, Jen. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Stanton, do you have any, uh, questions at this time?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to use this other cell phone. Uh, no, I'm pretty good. Uh, you guys covered it, asked a lot of great questions.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, thank you, Jen. Thank you, board. Uh, Sal?
We're going to call Mr. McDermott. Um, he's been sworn in already, but we need to qualify him in a little, a little more detail. Ryan, could you place your credentials on the record, please?
Absolutely, thanks again, Sal. Again, the members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. Ryan McDermott, R M, R Y A N, uh, M C D E R M O T T, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from Rutgers with a Bachelor's of Science in Engineering. I'm a principal at Dynamic Engineering. I've been with the firm for about seven years now. Professional address is one nine zero four Main Street in Lake Como, New Jersey. And over the course of that time, I've managed and designed dozens of industrial, commercial, and residential applications.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan, um, you already ran through the site in general terms. Could you now discuss with, why don't you first, give the board a little detail as to what the surrounding uses are?
Absolutely. Um, and, and again, I appreciate the, the level of detail that we've gotten into thus far. I'll, I'll, I'll hope to drill down on that a little more and provide some clarity to the board, as I know there were a couple of questions, and and we're eager to really dig into the specifics here. Um, if I could, Sal, just to build the record and answer a couple of questions that came up in the engineering and planning review letters, I'd like to touch on existing conditions just a little bit more here. The existing property is fourteen acres in size. It's largely undeveloped due to wetlands, which exist on the westerly portion of the site. The applicant does have a recent wetlands letter of interpretation from NJDEP dated April of two thousand and twenty-one, which delineates those wetlands. We don't intend to disturb any of the wetlands or the wetlands buffers as part of this project. Um, the property currently contains four buildings, two of which are being demolished, as we briefly touched upon earlier. Those are this building here, which is approximately eight hundred and seventy-one square feet in size, and this building here, which is approximately two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet in size. There are two existing full movement driveways on the property. One of which, the northern driveway here by my cursor, serves for this existing residential dwelling only, while the southern driveway provides circulation and supports the entire, um, outdoor storage and warehouse and component of this project. Located to the north of the site is wooded area with a dwelling and industrial uses beyond that. To the east is Squawkamie Road with public land beyond. To the south is Howell Ice Arena with commercial uses beyond. And to the west is undeveloped wooded area presently. We are here tonight seeking use variance, as well as preliminary and final site plan approval for a few minor improvements to the site. We touched upon it earlier. The applicant is seeking to add overhead doors to the existing warehouse building in this northwesterly corner here, and to raise the height of that existing building to serve some of the interior operations. The applicant is seeking to demolish two of the smaller buildings on the site. The applicant is also proposing to relocate the existing fence, the existing landscaping, existing retaining wall, and existing monument signage a little bit closer to the roadway. Um, that would be located outside. Um, that would be located outside of the twenty-two-foot right-of-way easement, which is shown on the property survey. Nonetheless, the applicant would like to push that fence to approximately thirty feet from the um from the roadway line. If I could, I'm going to flip over to the site plan sheet. So you can see here that thirty-foot dimension from the property line to the new fenced setback line is part of the proposition tonight. The reason that the applicant is requesting relief to expand that fence, expand the landscaping, the retaining wall, and the monument sign further closer towards the roadway is to expand upon that outdoor storage component. The outdoor storage area is proposed to increase from roughly sixty-nine thousand five hundred square feet as part of the two thousand and nine resolution of approval to approximately eighty-four thousand seven hundred square feet. And that expansion will be confined primarily to the southerly and easterly portions of the lot, which we're looking at here. And it will be fenced in. If you follow my cursor here, we have a fence around the outdoor storage component with a few gates around the perimeter. We are not proposing any changes to the driveways, parking areas, no increase in impervious coverage, no regrading, no utility modifications, lighting changes, and no new signage proposed at this time. From a site improvement standpoint, it is actually fairly straightforward compared to some of the other um applications the board might see. Uh, the applicant has been operating effectively at this site for approximately fifteen years, as you heard, and we're simply asking um for for a few minor site modifications to enhance his business operations as he continues to grow. We are adding new plantings along the roadway. And we did receive comments from the board's tree expert. We will happily agree to satisfy all of her technical comments. That being said, there are a few variances, existing nonconformities, and design waivers associated with this project. Um, I believe there were three use variances identified. One for the existing dwelling, which is nonpermitted in the S E D one zone. Two, uh, there are multiple principal buildings existing and proposed, which is not permitted. And three deals with warehousing, which does not meet the conditional use criteria. There are four, four bulk variances we are seeking relief for tonight. One is for the expansion of the storage into the side and front yard areas. Two is for encroaching upon that fifty-foot front yard buffer Jen mentioned earlier. Three is for a retaining wall in the front yard. And four is for a fence within the front yard. Again, all of those are very similarly related and deal with the expansion of that outdoor storage space closer to the roadway. There is one existing nonconforming variance condition, again, existing nonconformance varying, variance condition. And that's for the front yard setback to the existing dwelling. Sixty feet is required, whereas approximately fifty-eight feet is provided. And there are six existing nonconforming waiver conditions. Again, six existing nonconforming waiver conditions. Those would be driveway separation from the property line. Thirty feet is required, whereas the existing driveway on the southern property line is is located adjacent to that property line. Two is for the um. Buffer to the existing dwelling is required technically by the site improvement standards. Again, that's a buffer between the existing parking and loading areas and that existing dwelling, which is located on site.
Isn't that a variance? That's a variance, right?
I believe that was identified as a waiver condition, but.
If that's in the buffer section sixty-three, that's a variance.
Gotcha. I was, I was referring to comment D two, which states the applicant should provide testimony regarding prior approval of the waiver. So I will change my notes to include variance. Okay, continuing on. Uh, Belgium block curbing is typically required by the ordinance. However, none is existing here and none is proposed. Again. Um, this site is a bit unique from a site circulation standpoint. The applicant and owners had this facility for fifteen-plus years, been operating efficiently and effectively. There's not much circulation coming in and out of this site on a daily basis. You heard that approximately ninety percent of his um tenants or clients coming to the site maybe once a month, if that. A few every couple of days, but in speaking with the applicant, I know there are some that haven't been here in years.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
How many parking spots does this? Site have?
Um, sorry, there are no delineated parking spaces under existing conditions, but we've identified approximately twelve, which can be fit around the existing warehouse building.
Jen, didn't I see striped parking?
I don't think so, cuz.
I think the locations are just shown um for planned purposes only, but they wouldn't actually be striped on the gravel.
Yeah, it's it's not paved, so there's no way to stripe it.
All right, so then when I counted, it's, it was like twenty spots, no?
Well, do you have that plan? Can you bring that up as opposed to the sheet?
It's actually the one right here. So we've identified space for approximately five spaces on the north side and seven spaces on the south side.
So so that's this, that's what you're talking about, Paul?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna have to see another, another plan that, the existing overhead plan.
Can you put the aerial back on?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so they're not really striped. It's really just showing that there's room for X amount of cars.
Okay, so. There's really no delineation as to where the designated parking areas are here, right?
Correct.
Right, not today.
If that was a concern, instead of striping, they could look to add concrete wheel stops, which is kind of just an indicator as to um the spacing and location where his cars could park. Um, potentially even signage too, showing um, you know, the twelve spaces.
I'd like to hear more of them. Go ahead, Mr. McDermott.
I'll continue with the existing um nonconforming waiver conditions if I could. Um, circulation aisle width thirty feet contiguous was required around the site, whereas the existing southerly driveway gets down to approximately twenty-seven feet in width. Um, uh, the next one is foundation. Plantings are required around the existing buildings, wherein, whereas under existing conditions, there are no foundation plantings around the buildings.
So here's the question. You're here to expand the existing building. Why are you not proposing any landscaping?
I don't think there was any expansion to the existing building proposed.
Going up, right? Up in height. That's an expansion, correct? You're here for a use variance, correct?
Correct. I think.
So the question becomes again, you're back, you want more. Why are you not proposing? Why are you not trying to mitigate any of these waivers is my question?
Well, I think what we're looking at here. Yeah, uh, it's a, it's a valid question. I think what we're looking at here is you have sidewalk around this portion of the building here. And then this is where your overhead loading doors are 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 located.
I'm sure you figure something out to at least come into more in compliance with this requirement. Like, I I just wanna state for the record, and I don't mean to overstep, Mr. Chair. But if you think you're gonna come in and ask for a use variance to do more, increase the height, do increase the outdoor storage, but not reconcile any of these waivers. It probably is not gonna work out for you. So I don't know if you wanna keep going, or you wanna maybe take five minutes and revisit some of these waivers, because this application needs a lot of relief. And twenty twenty-two is not two thousand and nine, so. I think that there are things you can do to bring this site more into compliance than what you've done. And they've all been identified in my letter and in Jordan's letter. So I think that you guys maybe need to take five and go through them and rethink how you wanna present this, because my recommendation is a lot of these things get rectified. A lot of the waivers that you're saying, you know, were granted almost twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, should continue on today, and I don't agree with that. You can make the site better than it is right now. So I don't know how you wanna move forward from here, but I would just say a lot of these waivers can be at least partially mitigated and should be.
That's, that's fine, and and we're, we're not gonna take five only because it's gonna take a lot more than five minutes to sort through that, but we, we get the message loud and clear. And and your input has been valuable, and we, we would like to at least, we're not gonna present planning testimony tonight, cuz we understand we have to come back with some revisions. But we'd like to at least get through the engineering system as much input as possible.
Perfect.
Yeah, and and Jen, honestly, that's the input we're looking for here. So we do appreciate that, that honest feedback.
You know, Mr. McDermott, it's nine sheets that, that they have, uh, and I've been reading through it all, and, you know, I completely um. You know, concur with Ms. Beam and, you know, no Band-Aid approach here. I mean, you want it, you want. You know, to go ahead and improve the site, we should improve the site.
I think there were, there were only a couple more, and.
Okay.
The let, the last, you know, the last existing condition I would mention is the sidewalk to the right-of-way. This is not something where you typically have pedestrian traffic, so I think we would continue to ask for design relief there. Of course, we'll confer with the applicant. And then the, the last one is the sidewalk along the property frontage. I do think the applicant would be amenable to the monetary contribution, which was outlined in the CME report. Only because, you know, in reviewing the surrounding properties, especially the adjacent um Howell Ice Arena, which was recently constructed, there's no sidewalk in that area. And we feel it would be a appropriate uh to to lean on the monetary contribution in lieu of.
So that's still, that's a waiver. So you still have a waiver for that?
Yes.
And then you need relief for the architecture.
Right, so we'll, we will submit um the architectural plans and try to work with you on comments that you may have, Jen, if you haven't seen them yet.
Okay.
Um, and then I don't know. Uh, I know that, Ryan, before you finish, uh, I know that we had requested or was suggested that Jordan show that the um street view of this property. Jordan, can you see that just so, so the board sees what we're looking at from the road?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so this is the aerial.
Hold on, Jordan. Okay.
Everyone sees it. Okay, this is the Google Earth aerial. It's got the same image, I believe.
Yeah, that building's still there. Yeah.
This is the north driveway. And the applicant says that. Sorry, it's, looks blurry.
So it's, it, you can see it.
Yeah, it's good. You're doing well, Jordan. Continue, please.
You got big shoes to fill in the eyes of this board. That's for sure.
I don't know why it's so blurry right now.
So that one, so the north driveway, Jordan, looks like it's paved, correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna try to reopen this.
That's repaved.
Yeah.
The northern driveway is paved. We confirmed with Mr. Zarelli.
So the other question, Sal, is have you been to the county and does the county require any widening?
We, Ryan, yes, we were at the county. Ryan, I don't believe they require widening, do they?
Not as for widening.
Okay. Now, does the, does the moving of the fence and the sign closer to the road impact like site triangles or any kind of like visual issue?
There is a twenty-two-foot wide easement along the roadway. We are careful to stay out of that. But Jen, to your point, um, the fence does encroach upon a site triangle.
Right, so that's something that we're gonna need to work out too.
What I would add to that, while we're discussing the issue and while Mr. Rizzo is looking at the street view, um. There is existing landscaping adjacent to that residential dwelling, and you can kind of almost see it to the right of your screen here.
Yeah.
That would be much more intrusive, in my opinion, than any fence would be to the site triangles.
Right, but where's the property line on this, on this image? Is it at the mailbox? Or is it at like the little landscape wall by the trees?
No, so actually, that's a great point. It is right by that mailbox.
Right, so those trees are set way, way back, so they're not gonna impede the site triangle when you come out at all. I just wanna make sure that from a safety standpoint, once you move the fence forward and the sign forward, I don't have a problem with you moving it forward. I understand why you're doing it. I just wanna make sure it's safe and that it's not impeding any site triangle on that driveway and the, and the southern driveway.
Very valid question. I did look at that, and I can confirm the fence does not get any closer than those trees. It's actually set back another plus or minus ten feet closer into the site from where those trees are existing located.
Okay, well, I have a question regarding those trees. Are they, they look to me like they're green giants. Sherry, is that? Am I correct?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, are they being moved at all? If you're moving the fence up or are they staying put? Cuz.
Those, those would stay put. Ideally, we would like to keep most of that um vegetation along the, the closer to the roadway there existing. All the vegetation that's behind that small modular block retaining wall, that would be brought in closer to the roadway shifted up with the fence.
Okay, cuz I was, I was just trying to figure out how you're gonna move a fence thirty feet closer to the road without uh. You know, cuz right now it doesn't look that bad.
Ryan, you're gonna relocate those green giants?
All of the, yes, that, that is the applicant's intent is to relocate all of those plantings and the modular block wall, as well as the monument sign, which you can see over to your left here. He wants to bring all of those a little closer to the roadway to accommodate the fence shift.
But Ryan, there are trees to the right of the home that are closer to the road. We're not touching those.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
And you keep driving down the road there, like to pass the house on your left. No, he's right. Okay. If you go beyond those existing trees. Keep going. There is an opening there. Yeah, um, that fence is staying in that location?
Yeah, so I believe, believe there was a comment, I forget whose letter it was, about updating the site survey to show where this existing vegetation. And the applicant is, is, that is underway.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. McDermott, I'm looking at the site plan now. It looks like the site triangle is shown. Think about thirty-five feet back from um this driveway here. So I think you can take another look at that and probably move the site triangle forward. Um, to be a more realistic spot where the, the vehicle would stop and actually look. And that may or may not improve it to the point where you might be uh avoiding these trees here.
Sure, and one of those green lines, is that just the program?
Yeah, it might be. It might be the actual like car surface or the, the car drove through.
Maybe. Can you go down to the southern driveway, though? I just wanna look at what's on the surface. Yeah, so that. Or, that does not, I mean, I can't really tell if that's pavement. It looks more like dirt.
Looks like old, yeah, it probably paved at one point in time.
We're probably gonna be looking for you to at least redo the apron and a little bit into the site, so the dirt and the gravel and stuff doesn't keep getting kicked out onto the road.
Yeah.
Pardon?
I absolutely wanna put an apron in. I would have done it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I wanna pave it into the, all as far back as I can before I have to do.
Drainage?
Drainage.
Yeah, I get it.
All right, so will you agree to do aprons at both driveways then?
Yeah, we're, we're, we'll work with you where necessary on that one.
It looks a little cleaner here.
Yeah, that's cleaner at the house, but the other one definitely needs it.
Okay.
All right, but but the board sees at least from the street view what um what you'll see, and what we're proposing is really going to be moving those, those landscaping, the landscaping a little closer to the road, but supplementing it even more to work with Cherry and and the board professionals.
So I think it's great. Honestly, I think it's really screened currently very well between the fence. And you know, Sal, I'm not a big fan of the chain link with the slats, but I do think here it's been maintained very, very well, and then the landscape strip. And I know Sherry's not a huge fan of like a monoculture, but I do think that that provides a very decent screen, so you're not seeing what's happening back in the yard. Um, so I know, like you said, we're probably not gonna finish, but as we're looking at trying to mitigate some of these waivers, I think we need to take a look, and I would recommend probably, once we finish tonight, maybe like a TRC with the professionals to go over some of the issues in the letters and some of the waivers that I think we could probably work through. Um, but unfortunately, because the ordinance is worded the way it's worded, you have that buffer. Um, but unfortunately, because the ordinance is worded the way it's worded, you have that buffer. And I'm assuming that that tree line is 50 feet from the property line. Is that correct?
Right.
So that, the flagpole and the sign currently are located in that buffer, right?
Correct.
And now you're looking to move other things into the buffer.
Correct.
Right. So that's a little we'll, we'll have to see how that works out. Cause typically the board does not like to allow for disturbance of the buffer where it's avoidable. Um, but I would say that on the flip side, I would think they'd be, if, if the screen was as successful as this screen, that, you know, perhaps relief for things in the setback off the buffer. Um, might be something that we can work with, but you know, I, I get, I get what you're trying to do. Um, I understand it and you are taking away two buildings. I think maybe we should sit down and try to think about how the site could be laid out so that it could minimize or even eliminate and mitigate some of the relief that has been existing or, you know, has been previously approved to improve the site overall. I think this is a much better view for the board to see as well as anyone that's interested from the public versus the aerial. Cause you know, these sites in, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, are not what I would consider the most beautiful, but I understand from a practical position that the site needs to function. So, you know, from my perspective, as long as we can screen it properly and hold that buffer the best that we can, I think that we can work with some of the other things on the interior of the site. You know, if you were to carry and work with us prior to asking the board to act on the application.
Yes, that's fine. Um, Ryan, was there anything else you wanted to cover tonight before we ask the board for any questions and then carry? Look through my notes here, Sal. I think that was it for my direct.
Mr. Affilia, I do have a few questions for Ryan as well. So. Um.
Sal, we're gonna, we're gonna open it up to the board members and ask them if they have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, I've been told there's a Mr. Murphy in the waiting room. I think he's the attorney on the next application. He may have a timing issue. I don't know if I lean, if you want to let him in. If this is just a, we take a one minute segue here. It may impact the rest of the evening.
Okay. Sorry, Sal.
Sure.
Good evening. Yeah. Hi, Mr. Murphy.
How are you? Uh, I was, I'm on the next application. I was simply requesting to be carried, uh, based upon the fact that the board only has, uh, five members tonight.
Six.
I'm sorry, six, but I would like seven.
Elaine? What, what would you like to be carried, Mr. Murphy? Into the new year or do you're looking at something later on in this year?
Uh, the new year would be fine.
The next meeting date I have is January 23rd.
That would be fine.
It's not official yet. They have to vote on the meeting dates, just to let you know.
Okay. Very good.
When is the deadline on the application?
February 9th, February 9th.
February 9th.
They're so happily put that on our agenda so we can figure that out.
Okay, Mr. Murphy. So for anyone in the public who's here for case number BA 22 dash 09 Plaza Mexico, Delaware, New Jersey LLC. This application is being carried to 23 January 2009. The expiration date is February 9th, 2023.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, Mr. Alfieri, back to you.
Mr. Rizzo was about to ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. Um, Mr. McDermott, first question, while we're still on the front along Swankham Road, there's an existing 22 foot, uh, county easement there. I think you just might have a small encroachment with the new sign location. Not sure if it would be permitted in there. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But if you can either confirm that or just make sure that you've slightly relocated to outside of that easement.
Yes, we will confirm that the sign to be relocated will absolutely be outside of that easement.
Okay, thank you. And then uh, you mentioned the wetlands, you have an LOI and you don't anticipate getting any permits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then can you just clarify for me? I mean, the buffer extends onto the property and I see that your proposed fence. It might be best if you can maybe pull your screen up again and show your exhibit. You're proposing a fence to be outside of the buffer. Um, but the buffer itself goes through the building. And I'm assuming you're probably going to have or anticipating having some storage through there, some vehicles driving through there. Just curious if there's been, you know, communication with the DEP, I, is that something that's permitted or are you still considering any permits to encroach in the, the buffer area?
No, you're correct. So we're not disturbing any of those areas, but vehicle circulation is allowed in that particular portion. This is a bit of a unique site, whereas in, um, most of the western portion of the site is exceptional resource value with 150 foot buffer. This particular area of the site is intermediate resource value with only 50 foot buffer. Um, the existing building, you're correct, does encroach upon that buffer. No permits were needed retroactive to that. And since we're not disturbing any, um, any property within that 50 foot buffer, we do not need any new, um, land use permits, but they do allow for vehicle circulation in that area and they have seen this plan before you.
Okay, thank you. Um, would you mind pulling up the vehicle circulation plan? Sheet seven. And I just want to make sure that there's going to be some organization as far as storage. It looks like the trucks will come in the southern driveway, probably utilize the first gate. Um, so all of that space will be open and, and will allow for the trucks to get in and out. And then if they need to use the rear gate, will there be some type of aisle from the rear gate back to the front? Maybe that's more of a question for Mr. Zarelli as well, but just concerned with, um, trucks navigating through what, what might be a sea of stored vehicles.
Yeah. So I can touch on the first part of that. We did ensure that this first gate was located such that there's no encumbrances or interference with any of the storage component so that they can get in and out using this first gate. And that's, that's also why we pushed this gate, this fence, um, as far south as we did, so that they have full ability to circulate outside of that gated pattern. Um, in terms of exactly where the outdoor storage components will be located within the fenced area, um, specific to this northwestern gate, I don't have an immediate answer for you. Perhaps Rod could opine on that.
Uh, I, I don't even need that western gate there. Uh, I, I probably wouldn't even use it.
Okay. I mean, I think it's probably fine to keep it more so for emergency purposes or potentially do you need to use it for some reason, but as long as your primary uh, circulation be through the front gate and that whole area is remaining clear of any storage so that the vehicles can get in and out. Um, and you said the fire official has seen the plan as well. And
Yeah, he had two, two comments, the fire official, which we'll address.
Okay. Um, no new signage is proposed, right? It's just the one existing freestanding sign that's going to be relocated. No building signs or anything like that.
Right. Correct. That's correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Fellow board members, did anyone else have a, uh, question for?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, I don't think anybody actually got into the drainage, because I'd asked the applicant, I thought the engineer might touch on that. I just want to know how the grading is as far as where the water's going when we have a heavy rain.
Very valid question. So for this particular site, most of the property drains from east to west towards that rear wooded area where the wetlands are located. Wetlands are always, or almost always, I guess I'll say in very rare circumstances, uh, they're not, but almost always located at the low portion of the site. Um, so in this particular condition, um, under existing and proposed conditions, because there is no regrading proposed, the site will primarily drain from the east portion of the site closer to the road back towards the wooded area.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that. And the other question I had is, I'm still a little confused with this front um, screening that you have now with the green giants. Are they being moved forward? Because I know there's, uh, when we move everything forward, there's going to be some new uh, buffers. Uh, are they going to still be, I mean, are they going to be able to be moved? I would assume they could be professionally moved forward. But there are some of them are pretty good sizes.
So the ones that were close to the residential dwelling, the very large ones that are located close to the residential dwelling, those are not located near, anywhere near where we're relocating that fence. The ones that are immediately adjacent to the fence and, and on top of that modular block retaining wall, that will all be shifted up with the fence.
Okay. Are the shrubs being, are the green giants, are they going to be moved too?
Yeah. And Mr. Zarelli, you could respond. Yes, uh, actually Long's landscaping. He put them in, he's going to move them for me.
Okay. Yeah. I, I think that's a great idea because I actually like how they look and I think they do, uh, they do screen that area. So I'm glad to hear that. Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of our tree expert, Ms. Sparrow? What is, in your professional opinion, what is the likelihood that moving those trees is going to be successful? Will those trees take thrive or are we going to be replacing these trees within a year or two?
I was going to have them add a note to the plans that anything that does die would have to be replaced in time. Um, you know, I can't really say what the success is because I don't know who that landscaper is and how well he knows, you know, about big tree moving, uh, and then how well they'll water it and, you know, et cetera. Um, but certainly we'll have them put a note on the plan that anything that does die will have to be replaced.
And when you replace, replacing a comparable sized tree so that they, it maintains the same aesthetic, that they're all similar sized trees. And you don't have, you know, a six foot tree next to, you know, two 15, 20 foot trees?
That is an issue. Um, I mean, certainly purchasing a 20 foot tree is very expensive.
In happening.
What?
Yeah, that isn't happening. So.
Yeah. But I mean, the cost is, it is very high and the chance of that tree surviving also is probably pretty slim. So.
Well, right now they're, Mark, they're not all the same size anyway. I've noticed there is some difference in height. I think if you have the right landscaper, I think they can be moved, uh, with the stipulation, they have to be replaced at a large size if they
I've definitely seen trees that size moved. Uh, there's a place on, um, on 33 that had just put in arms like that size. So it's possible as long as they do a good job of, you know, maintaining them once they've been moved. And of course depends on what time of year they move them.
That's it, Sherry. You know, as long as we have good climatic weather, that is conducive to the move. Otherwise, when they make the move, they got to replicate that and they have to put some TLC into it to make sure that the trees take root. All right.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Chair, can I ask Ms. Beam? Go ahead.
No, Mark, you're on. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Ms. Beam, uh, back in May, when we redid the circulation element, uh, I know that this, I'm looking at it right now. It says that this uh, five, section of 524 is a collector road.
Yeah.
What is the minimum setback required for this type of road?
The setback or the right of way?
Uh, either or, if you can just put some, you know,
The setbacks would be the same regardless of the classification of roadway. All that does, all the different classification does is it requires um, a certain right of way. Jordan, do you know off the top of your head what the right of way of this road is?
Orion.
Off the top of my head, I don't. I can try to find it though.
But it doesn't, the classification of the roadway doesn't affect the setback. It just affects how wide the right of way has to be. And then the setback gets measured. So in this particular instance, then the buffer comes off the property line 50 feet, and then the setback is measured off of that. So typically a road like this is probably what? 80 feet, Jordan, right of way? It's a county road.
Uh, I think it'd probably be a little bit smaller. Um, I'm going to see if I can find it.
Well, that would make sense because I'm looking at the circulation element and it does indicate 80 foot right of way.
Yeah. So that's, that's probably, but that's, that's the right of way of the road. It doesn't affect the location of the property line, which is one of the reasons why I asked if the county, when they went to the county was going to ask for dedication. Because if they don't have the required, they use the word half-wish, which basically means from the center line of the road to their property line would have to be, if, if the right of way was 40 feet, um, it would have to be 40 feet from the center line of the road to their property line. So if they don't have that, they probably have to dedicate some of the road, some of their property, then the buffer, then the setback off of that.
Right. And, and Mr. Zarelli indicated, indicates to me that when the 2009 approval, he did have to give a dedication to the county for so that would
Makes sense. Makes sense.
Just for everyone's edification, I do have the latest county review letter in front of us because we are currently working through that approval. This one's dated November 10th of, of this year. So only a few weeks old. And it says that the standard county rate, uh, county right of way width here is 80 feet. And no additional right of way dedication is recommended for this project.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, answer?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to state, since we're not voting tonight, that, um, I, I would like to see some remediation of the, the junk, the stuff that's not being paid for storage. Um, seems to me that there's, just from the overhead, a lot of stuff that's there that, that, that may be rusting and um, we're, we're now fencing it in. So nobody can see it, but it's not going away. Um, I don't know if that's inappropriate or not, but it, it is of concern that, that this site is being used to store stuff that shouldn't be stored there.
Well, they have approval previously for outdoor storage. They're asking us to allow for them to expand that.
But did, but as, as Mr. Precy pointed out, outdoor storage or, you know, stuff that's just sitting there is, is
That I a hundred percent agree. It shouldn't be sitting there for years upon years upon years. So that's something that if you guys look to approve this after they come back and we meet with them and what have you, I would recommend some specific conditions associated with that outdoor storage. Not that, you know, we're going to be in there every day inspecting it, but if there becomes a problem, at least we have the leverage to do something about it.
That, that was my point. Thank you, Ms. Beam.
Is Mr. Agron?
Yeah, I was just thinking of him.
Is John around? Eileen?
He's there.
Where are you?
I'm here with Eileen.
Hey, great. Hey, John. So, um, you know, for the board, for the edification, you know, the, the, the things that we're looking at, I'm, I'm sure you're tracking this application. Um, you know, registration and insurance for storage of vehicles versus non-registration. You know, and, and insurance for storage of vehicles. Do we have any, um, ruling or ordinances or statutes on that?
So our ordinance currently only cover motor vehicles, uh, trucks, cars, motorcycles, uh, trailers. Uh, typically code enforcement doesn't have the ability to run registrations on, uh, on boats. Uh, if you're looking to, uh, somehow, uh, moderate what's out there, uh, I would suggest a number of boats, um, versus, um, you know, reg, uh, relying on registrations. Um, if a boat is falling in disrepair, that would fall under just general property maintenance issues. Uh, but to tie it into a registration, if it's registered and it's kind of falling apart, then the argument becomes, well, it needs some kind of criteria that was approved by the board. So I would definitely, if you're looking to limit it, I, I would say probably the number of vehicles, uh, because our ordinance doesn't currently cover, uh, boats per se. And as stated, uh, earlier in tonight, the approval, we had looked at this once before, early on, when I first, uh, started working for Howell. And the approval does state that it, it allows, uh, for the storage of boats. Uh, and from what we can tell at the time, they were registered or they were on a trailer that did have license plates on them. So, um, in accordance to our ordinances, he was meeting what was, uh, what was approved.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So, so, so Sal? Yes, um, we would, you, you heard it. So we're just going to try to, uh, make sure that, you know, should this application be approved, that, you know, we'll come up with some crafty language that, uh, satisfies the board members and, uh, and the professionals over.
Yeah. And we'll try and work with your professionals on that in the, in between now and next time we come back.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other board members? Do you have any questions for Mr. McDermott? All right, any other board members, do you have any questions for Mister McDermott? Not seeing any, all right, Sal, it's back to you.
Well, that's, that's gonna conclude our presentation tonight, Mister Chair, we're gonna, um, ask that we be carried to a date certain, and we'll have a TRC with. Board professionals and perhaps a resubmission between now and then.
Okay, does the twenty-third of January work for you, Sal?
It's good with me, other guys, Ryan and Justin?
That works for me, Sal, this is Justin Othello.
Okay, so that's fine, Mister Chair, thank you.
Okay, Eileen, is that, does that work for us? Case number BA zero eight twenty, twenty-four A, Rod Zarelli?
Yes, that works for us.
We're gonna carry this application till twenty-three January. Uh, of of twenty twenty-three, we're gonna need an expiration, uh, date extension.
We will grant the extension through the end of February in case it's snowing on January twenty-third.
You got it, so with expiration through twenty-eight February.
Mister Chairman, my only question is, is did you wanna open to the public for the testimony that happened so far?
You know, it's, it's a good question, I was contemplating it, and, um. You know, I don't think this finalizes the testimony of the engineer. Or the applicant right now, um, so what is your recommendation, since we're more than likely gonna have them back?
If you're coming back, I'm fine with carrying it, but I just didn't want you to at least have the board think about it before we adjourn, that's all.
Sal, you're gonna be bringing your applicant back along with the engineer, so that we. When we go through all of this, we can open this up to public then, correct?
Yes, all, all the same witnesses will be, or, yes, all, both of the witnesses will be present along with a plan.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I'd like to just make, um, my opinion on this is. Based sometimes on public comments, sometimes that can shift how the engineer, how we come back for the next hearing. I seriously doubt we're gonna really hear anybody, because there's not any residuals, but. I don't see any harm, and at least.
Well, then, you want to have a motion from you, Mister Mertens, to open up to public?
Yeah, then I'll make a motion to open the public.
I'll second that, Mister Chair.
Got a second from Mister Hughes, all in favor? Alright, okay. Eileen, open up the public, please.
We will now open the meeting to the public, if you are calling in, you could press star nine. To raise or lower your hand, and star six to mute and unmute yourself. There is no one from the public raising their hand.
Yes, we'll give, we'll give him thirty seconds more, there's no one dialing in. Okay. Mister Merton?
I think we should close it to public, I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second that?
Second, can't there, all in favor? I. Eileen, we are closed to public.
We are now closed to the public.
So we there? Yeah, Mister, I'm sorry, go ahead.
While we're all here, is, is it okay if we ask another question of Mister Zarelli? Before we close out this application for the night?
Mister Bear?
I, we didn't adjourn yet, so.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Okay, so, early on, and when you, uh, you know, were talking about what your plan was with the site, you talked about how there was. There was a new business coming to this site when we were looking at the, the Google Street Map. What was the name of that environmental, um, company that was gonna be renting space in that back building?
Certified Environmental, they're, they're already there, they, they've been there for the last four years or so. They're in the building that's gonna be tearing down. So I want to move them into the other building.
Is that your business, or is that like a tenant?
No, it's a tenant. I have a CCO for them and everything, they've been, they've been there a good four or five years.
Okay, how, how does that, ma- maybe somebody else can answer the question? But in, in the resolution from two thousand nine, it said it was further testified to by the applicant that no additional employees would be added as a result of the proposal. So how, how does that fall into all of this, where it's like, there, there are tenants of yours, are they considered an, an employee? Of your business or another business?
Well, that sounds more like a legal question than a fact question, Mister Precy. If the township issued them as they're representing approvals for this tenant. So it wasn't being done in a inappropriate way, I'm like. I, I understand your point of the approval, but, uh, it does seem.
But if he's got a CCO.
Yeah.
For the business, that means he's already went through the township, and the township's already, you know, signed off on it. So it could be a catch. Twenty-two riding the fence here. So in the, uh, in the new ordinance. Or in this application, should it be approved, we might want to address that.
Alright, thank you.
I'll have a follow-up to that, what if environmental doesn't, isn't a tenant there anymore, and they want to bring in new tenant, they would have to go. And get a CO. Is that correct?
Yes, for every tenant, they would have to get a CO.
Okay.
And Jen, that doesn't prohibit them from doing that, does it?
That's what I was trying to get at.
No, I mean, I think, I think that the prior approval. Dealt with how the site had been operating, they're back asking for modification to that approval. I think that it, it's important for Mister Alferi to take note that. You know, we're gonna be looking for some, you know, I know there was some testimony about employees, et cetera. But we're gonna be looking for some hard numbers in terms of max employees. So if it's more than you have now, and you're thinking you're gonna expand, tell us what exactly you're anticipating getting there. In the future, so that we can ascertain what exactly is gonna be happening on the site, that's all.
Okay.
That's fair.
All right, well. You know, Sal, if you don't have anything further.
No, I request that the announcement be made that it's carried without the need for further notice, and then we will be back in January.
Yes, sir, so, again, case number BA zero eight dash twenty-four A, Rod Zarelli. Uh, this application will be carried to twenty-three. January. Two to twenty twenty-three. And with an expiration date. Our extension to twenty-eight February with no further notice.
Yes, thank you, everyone, and have a great holiday, at the end of the year, not this holiday.
Same to you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. So, so Eileen, um, you know, the dates, you know, I think, you know, there's just. I think we're good with December, we just gotta figure out, you know, if Septe- if September, if we're moving it to the eighteenth or not.
Okay, sounds good.
I think, I think that, I think that'd be something we'd have to do, right, but, yeah, we can, I guess, decide that next time around.
Well, you know, just being considerate, that's all.
To be honest, because there's always issues when we get towards this part of the year. So it's not a bad idea to take a minute and look at all the dates, especially as we get later into the year.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, I, I looked at the calendar, Russia Shauna is, I believe, September fifteenth through seventeenth. So if we moved it to the eighteenth, I think we should be good. But, you know, obviously, we'll, we'll wait till everyone has a chance to look. Eileen, um, was there a deadline that you needed to have this back so that you could properly notice before the beginning of next year?
Uh, there's no deadline, but the sooner the better, uh, but the, the next meeting is on the twelfth, so if we can finalize it by then.
Okay, Rich, you got it on the twelfth?
Yeah.
And, and then I'll close it out on the nineteenth.
Sounds good.
All right, so, um, thank you, everyone, um, be well, be safe, be merry, um. We'll see you soon, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mister Chair.
And we got a second, thank you, everyone, thank you, Eileen.
Have a great night, guys.
Thank you.